... Tom Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Branch are all present. The tribe has placed two flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one in heaven.
All right.
Dear Father, thank you for this day, you give us thanks for the rain. I pray, Father, that the ones in the storm will look to you for peace. I pray that we make the right decisions on what we're doing.
All right, moving on to item number three. We approve the finish of the previous commissioner's fourth. Y'all agree with me?
I have a motion through the committee.
I have a motion from Kenneth. I have a second from Don. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor of set motion? Five, four, zero against. Item number four. Discuss take action authorizing the district county clerk to create and maintain a county court registry account with First Financial Bank pursuant to Local Government Code Chapter 117. Is that pursued?
Yes. So basically, what I'm asking for is the clerk to allow to maintain a registered account with First Financial Bank. And so what would happen is any time that a judge would order a fund into the registry account, we would deposit that money in there. And those items would be things such as funds for minors, you know, of course, under the age of 18, any funds that were paid due to the satisfaction of a judgment, and then cash bonds especially. Now, there is one thing. We can choose to either have an interest-bearing account or a non-interest-bearing account. What I have decided upon is a non-interest-bearing account for those funds. But one benefit that we do get out of that is when we withdraw that fund to release it to a minor or whomever, we actually get a percentage of it. So we get 5% on a non-interest-bearing account, and then 10% on an interest-bearing account. And that's actually 10% of the interest earned. And I would just ask that they'll approve that. It is actually a requirement for the clerk to maintain the registry.
So for clarification, it's 5% of the corpus if it's a non-interest-bearing account, but 10% of the interest only if it's an interest-bearing account.
Correct.
So the county would get a greater portion by having the non-interest-bearing.
Right. Now, the only downside to that is that for funds that are ordered into an interest-bearing account are going to be like the minor trust funds. So that's mainly what we deal with. But like the cash bonds that we do deposit into that account, that will be a 5%. But it's only up to $50, though. But it's still, I mean, it adds up.
Would the interest rates be at what they are?
Questions or concerns from Michelle?
I have a question. Where is the money at now?
Well, that's the thing. A registry account was never created. So in those cases that do have funds that are invested, we just deposit those into, we transfer them into CDs, is what has happened. But as of right now, they're just sitting in accounts with other cases. And actually, the law states that those are to be held separate from any cases.
Question, those monies that are currently in these other accounts, will they be deposited? If we approve this deposit?
They would be transferred into a registry account. But I'll actually, I'm going to need orders from the judge to do that, I guess.
How do you want the public to motion, I think?
It's just on her to create and maintain.
It's all rising. District County Clerk. To create, maintain. For Court, Riff 3, I just said right now.
I have a motion from Larry. I have a second from Kenneth. Do we have any further discussion or questions?
Commissioner, would you amend that to be with First Financial Bank? So that we can specify.
Yes, sir. Kenneth, do you still have the motion? Do we need to include, may we sign any documents at all?
The accounts are maintained by you, or?
No, sorry. So it'll be no problem. I have a motion by Larry. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further discussion or questions?
That is the 5%.
And a non-interest-bearing.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of set motion? Five, four, zero against. Thank you, Michelle. Item number five. County Auditor, presentation of enter financial statements for Expo and the golf course.
Yes, sir. If you remember correctly, after the January meeting, you said you wanted to kind of come back on a quarterly basis and kind of talk about the two enterprise funds. I put financial statements on your desk. So if you will locate the one that says profit and loss, Expo Enterprise Fund, it's a two-page report. And then also, there is a, this report that says Expo is a comparison of the profit and loss from the Expo Center. And we'll kind of go over that. This is the same report that you received in January, which shows the first two columns being April 2015. It shows you the revenues and expenses for the month of April. And then the next column shows you April 2014. Kind of gives you a comparison of this month of 2015 to 2014. And then the next two columns are year-to-date numbers for the same time period, 2015 through 2014. As you can see, I'm going to kind of focus most of my comments on year-to-date numbers because I think they're more relevant for us for our discussion. As you can see, for 2014, the year-to-date revenues were $315,721.81. And for 2015, that number is $428,671.53. However, to make it in comparison, you'll notice that in 2014, there was actual revenues from the amphitheater, which are not present this year. So just saying that he's up is really a, and up by $112,000 really isn't the whole story. He's actually up by $138,000 if we factored in that the amphitheater being gone. So revenues, and this is without any type of subsidy from the county. This is pure revenues that are getting to bank accounts. So revenues are certainly up for this year by $138,000. The other thing to notice is that the subsidy from the county, at this point in time, at the end of April last year, we had moved over $420,000 to the Expo Center. And this year, we've only had to move $161,000. So the actual amount that the county's had to subsidize that operation has actually decreased by $259,000 this year, which is always welcome news. The expenses, if you'll notice on page two, the expenses, total expenses for the year 2015 are 700, excuse me, $595,162.39. And for the same time period in 2014, the expenses were $735,871.69. So expenses have decreased by $140,709. So we just have a lot of, you know, a lot of good news there, positive implications there. So, you know, where we're looking at right now is the report shows that for year-to-date 2015, he has a net loss of $5,435. That includes the subsidy. So if you notice at the bottom of my comparison report, I try to back out certain things and non-recurring to look at the actual operations. So we start with that $543502 loss. We deduct the county subsidy out of that. But we also will put back in what I consider non-recurring, and that would be any type of fixed asset acquisitions, which were $23,096. And I actually gave him credit for the unemployment expense because I don't consider that a recurring expense. That's a one-time deal, $17,721.84. So the actual operational loss for the Expo this year is $131,617 standing on its own. Compared to 2014, that number was $379,93. So actually, we see an improvement there in that operation to the tune of $247,000. So Expo has had, you know, some good, strong quarters as we move into the summer. So hopefully, that we'll see some continued success there. Any questions on the Expo financials I can assist anyone with? If not, then we'll move over to the golf course. You have the similar reports. You have a profit and loss statement for the golf course. It is a three-page report. And then I prepared you a comparison sheet for the golf course as well. You'll see that revenues for the year-to-date for 2015 are $804,448.02. That is compared to 2014, a $771,830. That is an increase in sales revenues of $32,617, which is lower than anticipated, even though it's up. But we had just some challenging weather events out there this year. We were effectively closed for three whole weeks so far this fiscal year. So that really kind of curtailed us some. The reason, and I think that pulls into the next line, which is the subsidy from the general fund. Last year, we had only transferred $135,000. This year, it's $149,225.80. So the subsidy to the golf course has actually increased $14,025.80. And again, I attribute that directly to the weather-related factors that we had out there. Year-to-date expenses, this is something we're going to look at and kind of break apart. During this time last year, our year-to-date expenses were $832,673.6. This year, they topped off at $1,757.52. So our expenses are up $175,507.84 for this same time period. The first thing that we have to recognize in there is that we made a card payment that was not there last year. So that was $95,281.40 in that $175,000 increase. So that's attributable there. However, I have seen, and I've given you this report as well, it's a single-page general ledger report. This is all of the employment-related costs at the golf course, and it shows through the month of April and April of last year. And what I've done is I've included all of the salaries, payroll taxes, insurances, all of those type of things, workers' comp insurance, all the employee-related expenses. And you'll see that at the end of April, for all the three departments out there, the total was $515,469.87. This time last year, it was only $441,441.69. So we have an increase of employee costs of $74,000 right now, year-over-year, out there for the same time period. This is information that's going to be relayed out to Doug and to Jeff to look at, and, you know, they need to be monitoring this a little bit tighter. And I'm going to make sure they have each amount of push. So, you know, combining the card payment and combining the increase in payroll costs, you know, I see where our expenses have gone up, $175,000. So these are the two areas. The one is an uncontrollable, being the card payment. That was a contractual thing. The employee costs are definitely controllable, and they're going to have to stay on top of. And make sure they're cutting where they can, part-time, those type of folks, get them off the clock when they're not needed. If you look at the bottom where I kind of break apart, you can see where I take off the one-time expenses. The golf course, that's that contract termination fee. Again, to be fair, for both enterprise funds, I took off the unemployment expenses and the equipment, furniture, fixed assets. You can see that operationally, without the subsidy, the golf course is at a net loss of $30,116 for the year. But this time last year, they were actually at a profit of $22,774. So that's how payroll costs can each other really quick. So that's a net swing of $53,000 year-over-year that we're going to need to spend a little time and focus on with them.
We have not factored in the contract that we have with the facility, correct?
No, sir. Because we have not received any revenues from that or anything at this point. That's going to be a made transaction. Any other questions regarding the golf course? And then the only other report I gave you was a report that was emailed to me from Elaine at the Expo Center, which was their report of, they didn't make it because the agenda got posted earlier, and they were anticipating. So that was their monthly report. And so I dedicated part of my work and handed out to you guys. So y'all had this, well.
Any questions or discussion? Brian?
Brian, to the golf course, we realize that golf or lease was going to be a factor obviously. But going forward, we anticipate that those parts that we purchase will, in fact, the longevity of those golf courses should eliminate for periods of time that cost.
Absolutely. You know, the difference in what we're doing now compared to what we were, we were doing just a lease payment. And that was actually anticipated to be about $125,000 to $128,000, depending on the program we looked at. By electing to purchase them, you know, we're making a note payment instead. We're buying the asset, and that's a five-year note payment with an expected longevity of at least seven to eight years on the cards. So, you know, we're looking forward to at least three fiscal years of note type of note payment on there.
I think that would be, if we're anticipating more time.
You know, the salesman indicated, you know, I'm a conservative guy.
Right.
So I'd rather be surprised than, and tell you that they lasted longer than have to come back and share why they didn't. So I'm with you, Commissioner. I'm hoping that we get 10 years out of them.
Going into a busy golf season, is it certain that we can reduce the loss of conservative organization costs?
Absolutely. And with payroll costs, with, excuse me, with payroll costs, you know, obviously, we start having another sales dip once we get into July because of the heat. So July and August, kind of, we see a sales dip, if you would, that picks back up in September once it starts cooling off a little bit. So, you know, just for the guys out there, for Doug and for Jeff, to anticipate that dip in July and making sure that they're keeping those payroll costs down. If we're not, you know, if the usage does not justify the staff, let's cut them out.
Did electric bill go down a month or so?
We're, the way that our, the one, to answer the question, yes and no. We're using less electricity, however, primarily on that golf shack out there where the golf carts were all plugged in. That demand was set, and so we're still in a demand contract for that that's about to expire. So even though our usage is lower, they're charging us a demand factor, which makes that electricity very expensive out there, just for that one meter. So we're anticipating for that new demand factor to be considerably lower because it's just now just a, just some overhead lighting in that cart, no more of the battery chargers.
And we were going to say, what did we?
But the gotcha by the electric company was that demand factor, and we're working through that.
When's our next meeting?
I can set it at any time.
I thought it was.
You know, I email them these financials on a monthly basis so that they stay on top of it, so we can have one at any time. I can set it for the beginning of next week.
For sure. Well, we're very close to having a contract in place for some tee times that will help us hopefully open the door to the continuing process, and sell more things.
Well, and we're actually having a court session next Monday for the contemplation of a contract for a software vendor in a partnership with NBC Universal. That's actually going to shave about a grand of software costs off of the golf course on an annual basis that they're going to be picking up.
Also, the executive tee times, the cost of that's in.
That's correct.
Should be probably.
And exposure, because NBC Universal will be marketing those tee times, so.
And looking at the weather reports, I think they are over there at a river through their course, so hopefully that might generate some play.
And they're actually going to be shutting their course down for a time for maintenance.
Actually, I'm optimistic that we can get through the meeting now.
I agree. And at this point, I was sharing with the judge, I don't anticipate any more subsidy to the golf course, you know, unless we just really have a bad August or something of that nature. You know, right now is not the time we're going to have to be looking at more subsidy.
Frank, I'd like to compliment you on your effort to drive it all down and increase revenue.
Any other questions or discussion? That's it. All right, we'll move on to item number six. Discuss and award RFP for bank depository. County auditor?
No, sir.
County treasurer?
County treasurer. There you go, in there.
I just made sure it was on there. Okay, Sophie?
Well, we only got one request proposal for our bank depositary, and that was First Financial Bank. Who we currently have now, they, the proposal, in a nutshell, says all the services are going to remain the same, which they waive the fees for us, on monthly fees and things of that nature. The interest rate that they pay us will go down. And what I would like to request is that we enter into a four-year contract for them.
The interest rate, is it variable over this four-year period?
What it says, it says fixed interest rate, but it's 85% of the average 91-day treasury bill during the month prior service, with a floor of .10% and a ceiling of 3%.
What does that mean?
They're going to index it to the 90-day T-bill rates, but they're guaranteeing that it will not drop below .1. And they're also guaranteeing it will not exceed 3%. So they're capping it at 3%.
I make a motion that we accept the RFP for First Financial for as our bank possible.
As.
For four years, sir. Does Judge need to sign that?
It doesn't ask for a signature, does it? You can go ahead and authorize the judge to execute any documents in case there is.
And with authorization, the judge will sign said documents.
I have a motion by John. I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of set motion? Five, four, zero against. Next, Sophie. Item number seven. Discuss take action on joint election agreement between Granberry ISD and Somerville County. Natalie, is that Kathy?
That's me. Granberry ISD needs to contract with us for the November election, put school board candidates on our ballot because many voters in our precinct three are actually in the Granberry ISD school district. So they contract with us and they pay us, they split fees with us with the precinct pre-programming and everything because they need those people on their ballot.
We're doing it some fast.
Yes.
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry. Have a second by Kenneth. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of set motion? Five, four, zero against. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you all.
Item number eight. County auditor, seal bids. Number one is asphalt. The first one we've received is from Southern Asphalt Petroleum in Fort Worth, Texas. Then we received one from Cleveland Asphalt Products in Shepherd, Texas. And then Bright Asphalt Products out of Houston. Heartland Asphalt Materials out of Hurst. And the final one is from.
And final one is from Western Emulsion out of Dallas. We would like a motion to refer these to our road bridge superintendent for review.
I'd like a motion that the asphalt there, we could add it to road bridge superintendent.
I have a motion by John. Second by Kenneth. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. All right, number two is coverstone. Coverstones, we have a single bid from Vulcan Materials out of Fort Worth. And we'd like to review that as well.
I'd like a motion that we, please, Kathy, road bridge superintendent, the bid, coverstone bid.
I have a motion from John.
Second.
Second from Kenneth. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. All right, last one is open RFP for Seltzer Grill property. Before I open this, I would like to, need to make a disclosure. I've talked with the county judge, and I've also sought the advice and counsel of our county attorney. Received a call Friday afternoon by this organization, Creation Evidence Museum, and their indication that they're going to submit a proposal. In full disclosure, most of you know that I still operate my CPA practice, and I prepare the 990, the annual tax return for a 501(c)(3) charitable organization for this group. They did not get any information from me, they did not ask any questions of me, but I wanted you guys to know that they are a client. Okay? Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
So we've received one submission from Creation Evidence Museum in Glen Rose, Texas. And we'll be making copies of this and have it available for our executive session.
So what do you have more?
Just one. All right, moving on to item number nine, present all the letters. I placed the copies of the audit letters on your desk this morning. These all relate to operations at the Expo Center. The first one is for addressed to Frank Abbott at the Publica Dent Center there. You'll see a listing of the procedures that were done by our office, that there was no findings on any of them. I will make one comment on the bottom. You'll notice a note that says still pending final payment of $1,282, which was a returned check item from a customer. That has since been collected thanks to the efforts of a very able county attorney's office. So that was actually collected and remitted in May, so this letter is through March, so that's why it's still listed on there. The next letter is for Rose Creek. You'll see that the procedures and the things that we looked at, again, there was no findings. Everything was in compliance with the contract. And third letter is to Mary Simpson, who is the food concessionaire at the Expo Center, and you'll see the reports that we reviewed. And the only notice is that we're still waiting for a copy of the 2014 tax return, but it's been extended, so it's really not officially late. It's just, we're just making a notation that we're still waiting for the copy. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion.
Just a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
I have a motion from Larry. Second. Have a second from Kenneth. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
Item number 10, approved county treasurer's report.
Did you have the original, Susie, that this one was me to sign? I have a copy, a stand copy of.
Started it up there.
Oh, okay.
Of Mr. Franz.
Great.
The original semi-treasurer's report, yes.
I got it here. Go ahead, sorry.
Danny was just asking.
Yeah, I'll just make sure we had it up here. Yes. Somebody wants to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Larry.
Second.
Have a second from Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? Treasurer's report. All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. Thanks, Susie. All right, item number 11, receiving approved monthly reports from county departments. I believe we received all of them, we got the last of them this morning. Yes, sir. I have a motion from Larry to accept the county monthly reports. Second. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. All right, Brian, do we have 12 through 22? Yes, sir. These are money moves, just to highlight a couple of them. Number 12 is for the clerk's office. She was needing a little bit additional monies for some seminars. We did a budget last year, knowing that we had a new clerk coming in, and we want to take advantage of as much educational training for that position as possible. However, we undershot it by a little bit, and there's still some conferences that she'd like to attend. So this should get her through the rest of this year. Item number 14 deals with our law library and how we're, the amounts that we're needing to charge. So we had some in prior years that we charged to the county attorney and some that we charged to law library, and what we're going to do is charge a lot to the law library, so we'll move some money out of the county attorney's budget for that. And then number 15 is in response to the court's action last time. This is dealing with the repair, thank you, this is dealing with the repair of the antenna. This is moving the money there to make those repairs. Everything else is just some general housekeeping. You see, low of $85 to $700, and it's just some movement. The weather has really hindered the antenna repair, but in a couple of weeks, we should be moving forward.
Make a motion we approve money movers.
I have a motion from Kenneth. Clear. I have a second from John. Do we have any further discussion or questions on money moves, items 12 through 22? All in favor of said motion? It's five, four, zero against. Thank you. Item number 23, approved remaining county bills. You should have received, I believe, three emails from me preceding this meeting with the payment request. In addition, we have one that's going through payroll for Zach Davis, $7.03. This was Corey Neal, that he's being reversed and goes through payroll.
Make the motion to approve the remaining county bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion on county bills? All in favor of said motion? That's four, far, and Danny will abstain. All right, at this time, we'll retire into executive session. Discuss the Seltzer Grill property. You bet. Take a break, and then we will.